Six forty-five, we are starting early tonight because we have to go into executive session to interview a candidate. Um, so I call a meeting to order. Would someone like to adopt our agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Second, motion in a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion for the executive session? Yeah, read that. Read that.
Move to enter exec. S A, section three one three A three regarding the appointment of a public officer to include the applicant for the energy committee and town managerial staff.
Thank you. Second? Second. All in favor of going into executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Rest of you can enjoy yourself?
Application S zero 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 one one five eight eight for outdoor cultivator tier three renewal, which is Blondie's Bud Company.
Okay.
Second.
So, motion in a second on the agenda. Thank you. Um. So, would someone like to make a motion on the, uh, no, we have to adopt the agenda. I'm sorry.
Those in favor.
Yeah, all those in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Nobody. Okay, now, the reoccurring matters, which is the renewal of those three licenses. Pleasure, the board. Oh, minutes first. Thank you so much. Cannabis always confuses me.
Ah, well, you shouldn't have. Well.
Okay. Would, would someone like to make a?
I moved to adopt the minutes from the February twenty-four, twenty twenty-five local cannabis control commissioners meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're, um, looking at considering the applications, uh, the one that's on our warning and the two that Cecil just read. Those are a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on any of those? None heard. All in favor of considering or approving all three applications? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? And that leads us to item four, public comment on cannabis. Always quiet on cannabis. Okay. Uh, item five.
Motion to adjourn the cannabis meeting.
All in favor of adjourning cannabis? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we move on to liquor control. Uh, first, adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motions, adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one. Reoccurring matters would be the minutes of the March tenth meeting?
I'll move to adopt the, approve the minutes of the March tenth, twenty twenty-five liquor control commissioners meeting.
Thank you. Second? They motion to in a second. Any changes on the, um, liquor minutes? None heard? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? We can do three, four, five as a consent if you would like to, or do them separately, whatever someone would like to say.
I'm to make a motion to do them as a consent?
I'll second that.
The motion to approve all of our, uh, license renewals at once. Uh, any discussion or questions on any of those? All of, um, in favor of the approval of the, all the minutes, please, I mean, all of the licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? Public comment on liquor? You all have it. Ryan's motion?
Motion to adjourn the liquor.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we get to the really big shoe. Okay. Um. We are already up to item three, which is select board members remarks. My remarks are very, very brief. Just anyone speaking, please stay, uh, be, uh, uh, polite and, uh, treat people with respect and that anyone who speaks has to come up to the microphone so it can be heard by our recording clerk and all the people that are attending by Zoom. It's not punishment. You just have to come up here. Uh, with that said, anyone else have any select board remarks they would like to make? None heard. Moving on. Item four, the reoccurring matter.
I move to adopt the minutes, the March tenth, twenty twenty-five minutes of the Brandon Select Board Meeting.
Second. We have a motion in a second on the minutes. Any errors or corrections? None heard. All in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? The warrant. Pay the bills.
I have one question on the warrant.
We got a motion first. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion on the warrant? So we can discuss it?
I move to approve the warrant in the amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred eighty dollars in funding.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, questions?
Uh, my question has to do with the very first entry for access mobility. There's a five hundred and eighty dollar service call uh, for last week, and I was just wondering what that was.
So that is the, uh, platform lift at the town office. It had had its annual, um, servicing and it had passed its annual inspection and within days, days or a week, it required service. So they had to come out and do something. They reported, I did ask them details about it. They said it was a wear item and the lift is getting like around eight years old at this point and they were able to repair it. And if it happens again, they recommend that we'll replace it. It's a, it's like the limit on how far it travels, you know, at the top end.
I had one question also. Mr. Hopkins on, um, page three, um, McCullough Brothers, uh, twelve thousand dollars tree removal.
I can speak to that, uh, Doug. So that, uh, is tree removal that was done, those are trees on Park Street, tree, uh, so I'm sorry? Work on Steinberg Road, uh, tree removals on Birch Hill, North Birch Hill, and then going up North Birch Hill, clearing off some of the canopy for the plows that.
So they were all the trees that our tree warden identified as problem trees?
Yes, and plus some other highway trees as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do we quote that out? Do we get three quotes on that job?
This one they gave us, we did not get three quotes on that job. We got three days worth of tree work quoted for us at, at that price. And they did as many trees as we could have them do in those three days.
Anyone else would just like to notate for the public the small bill of, uh, four hundred and fifty dollars for paving that we did get some communication that we needed to pave, fix some potholes on Carver Street, et cetera, et cetera, and that was to buy, um, the
pot mix.
Whole patch mixed to pack into the potholes. So we listened to the complaint. Um, any other questions from anyone on the bills? None heard. All in favor of paying the warrant? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? And last of our reoccurring is the updated employee blanket payroll authorization. You'd like to update us on that?
Mr. Chair, um, up at the top of the page in the box are the changes from the last one. One is to add, uh, Cara Boudreaux. She's the operator in training at the wastewater treatment. She will be starting the first week of April. The second is a retention raise for Winston Forbes, who is one of the CDL drivers in the highway department. The next is a retention raise for Kyle Ledham, who is a CDL driver in the highway department. The last is a retention raise for Ethan Kelleher, who is a police officer, and that is specified, um, as part of the police contract that you'll discuss later.
We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve those.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion from the board? None heard. All in favor of approving the blanket authorization? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? No one? Item five, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, members of the public here tonight. I did submit my report in advance, but I want to highlight kind of a number of items from it if I could. One is that there are two vacancies on Bravo, which is the restorative justice board. If you're interested, please submit a letter of interest and the appointment cover sheet to me. Um, I did want to announce, share with the board, uh, that the town has been awarded a grant of fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars for a road erosion inventory as part of the V-Trans Better Roads program. That's an eighty percent grant with a twenty percent match. The town's match will come from staff time within its operating highway budget. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission is applying for a grant, uh, from the Vermont Community Foundation, not from the state, but from a private foundation to update the two thousand and two Brandon workbook. I helped them with that application. I did attend the fire district meeting. They voted five to zero to enter into the agreement to, um, receive the solar credits from the existing solar array. And, um, we have been talking, someone raised a question about the bus shelter and where we have one and where we don't have them and where the bus stops are and so forth. And Bill has reached out to one of the bus transit operators and I reached out to the other one and we're going to all coordinate and see if there are any modifications that can be made to any of the bus routes that come through Brandon to see if they can take advantage of the bus shelter that's stationed at the park and ride beside this building. On the back side, the second page of my report, um, the wastewater, one of the large bills in the warrant that was just approved was the final payment to the contractor for the wastewater upgrade. So, uh, Sue Gage has done a tremendous job of balancing and analyzing all the various funding sources that were involved. The total project cost was six million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, there was a voter-approved bond from the USDA, a grant from the USDA, a pollution control grant from the state of Vermont, a loan from the state of Vermont Clean Water Fund, and contributions from the wastewater rate payers. In the end, the local responsibility, uh, for, for this project will be less than sixty percent of the total project cost. This is a large-scale project. It's the biggest, um, project that we've had since segment six in Brandon. It spanned three town managers, two wastewater treatment system chief operators, and a team of engineers at Aldrich and Elliott and state of Vermont officials. The contractor was Brandon's own contractor, uh, Brandon's, Brandon-based Naylor and Breen contractors. Brandon is investing to ensure that our wastewater treatment is in compliance with all state and federal environmental regulations for the protection of public health and the waterways of Vermont. And we do intend, in the good weather, to have an open house so that the public can, um, check out the investment that has been made there. And as mentioned in, um, the employee payroll authorization a moment ago, um, there was a series of interviews of candidates for the third position at the wastewater treatment facility and we have a Brandon resident named Cara Boudreaux, who is signed on to be operator in training. She will start with the town the first week in April and we look forward to that. For updates, after my report went into the packet, um, I have had phone and email conversations with the town attorneys that were very successful, very encouraging. The tax sale letter has been drafted and approved and may in fact be in the mail right now. So there should be a number of folks getting a letter from the town attorney and hopefully inciting them to clear a delinquency that they might have accumulated. And I had, uh, some outreach from Spardella Slate that they intend to reslate this, the roof of this building in May. They will be here for that. And ahead of that, they'll work with us on any building access restrictions that we'll have to work around and the placement of dumpsters and stuff of that nature. But we are, um, first on their list for the spring projects.
Questions for the town manager on his report from the board?
Yeah, um, I have a question about the bus stops. Um, so is there anywhere where the buses are currently stopping that would be suitable for a shelter if a private interest or private group wanted to fund it?
That's a great question. So, um, what the bus operator that I talked to, uh, which is the, the bus, the Rutland side, uh, they indicated that the highest volume that they had was at Central Park, so by the gazebo. I'm not so sure that a shelter there would be most optimally cited, I'd say.
Correct.
Um, and they, um, Bill talked with the folks from Middlebury. They had some thoughts about.
Uh, Tri, Tri Valley Transit is, what is Addison County's version of the bus, um, and they both come through Brandon. They both stop at the same four locations, American Legion, Central Park, the post office, Estherbrook Park, and Park Village. Um, a couple of those are on call or call, you know, as needed, so they're not stopping at some of those. Uh, they were going over their numbers to figure out which stop is the most, uh, I guess, is the busiest. Um, and they also wanted to to connect with Marble Valley to find out where theirs is, but I think between the two, uh, the possibilities would maybe be the post office, but would require, I mean, it's private property. It's a private lot. But that was the one where they thought maybe they would be the most crossover as far as being busy. And we also talked about, again, the possibility of maybe moving one of the stops to where we already have a shelter, which is out behind the, uh, behind Dunkin' Donuts. Um, the person that was interested in shelters had asked about the possibility of putting a shelter right in front of Hanford because they'd seen people sitting on that bench at Hanford, but that is not a stop for any of the three bus services. He also got Vermont Transit, which also uses the spot at, that it's in front of the Brandon Inn. And when it's raining, people stand in the gazebo and get out or in the Brandon Inn if they've stopped the Brandon Inn.
Okay.
Is he in the, on the part of the wastewater plant that failed for them?
Yes, yes. Uh, so there were two, um, so there are three clarifiers at the wastewater plant. They all have this Royal Light curtain in them and it failed on two of them. And so one of them tomorrow will have, it was just a hole that was created by the wiper blade arm and that will be either repaired by replacing the panel or patching the hole. The other one is a more substantial kind of, it's the full curtain. I think that might be the photograph I sent you. Um, and that one's gonna take some more thinking, but right now the wastewater treatment facility can run at a hundred percent treatment, um, effectiveness with two clarifiers. Doesn't require the third one.
Quick thing, um, where are we on, uh, road salt inventory?
Uh, delivery of salt, the, uh, while we were at the last select board meeting and they have not gone through it, but they don't intend to order more at this point.
I did see a bag of salt sitting outside the post office, so like if we run low, maybe someone can just go grab it.
Other questions?
Who is, uh, who's our town attorney?
So, our town attorney, our attorney firm for many years has been, uh, in Middlebury. It was English and Carroll for a while, you know, it has changed because of the partners changing. So our actual attorney was Connie Pell of Carroll, Bow and Pell, and the firm is now Carroll, Bow and Kite. Connie has moved to different practice of some kind. So our new town attorney is Jim Carroll of Carroll, Bow and Kite. And they've, that firm's been the town's attorney for, I'm gonna say twenty years-ish.
I'd like to just, uh, comment on the, uh, general ledger finances in the, uh, um, all the categories of revenue. We have exceeded the annual revenue in eight of the categories already and one's right on track. And there's only one, one revenue source that is below, uh, the budgeted number. And our expense ones are, we're three quarters of the way through the year and, uh, looking pretty good there. I think you're staying on top of it very well. I appreciate that. Uh, questions for the town manager from the public? Your hand first?
Ken Manning. Now, they've been working on this letter to go up to the delinquent taxpayers for how long? Three, four months? And we've been paying them by the hour. It's, they're almost gonna take all the money that's owed to, owed to the town.
That's not so. So, the reason the letter had to be reworked was they started working on the letter when the delinquent tax statute read a certain way. And then when July first came and went, or sorry, January first came and went, they had to go with the way the delinquent tax statute was adjusted by the previous legislature. So it required some modification and the town posts interest every single month. So they had to make sure that they were sending out an accurate letter that was an accurate reflection as of the date of the letter with interest and penalties because it has to constitute the town's first offer of a payment arrangement. I, I share your dismay that the process was extended. Um, it was not a letter that the town has previously asked the town's attorneys to prepare. It was a letter that the, the board and I all felt would be a more effective way to collect delinquent taxes than the notices that the town generates itself. So during all this time, the town has continued to generate delinquent tax notices and send them out, and those historically have not had a very good response rate.
Now, of all the delinquent taxpayers from January to now, have any of them made attempts to contact the town?
Yeah, we have a number of active, um, tax repayment plans in effect. I, I sign two or three every week, I would say. Somebody comes in and makes a deal where the town says, this is what you owe and we'll break it up into twelve installments and you have to clear it within a year. And clearing your taxes within a year can be a big lift for folks if they've let it get away from them for a couple of years.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you though.
And I can guarantee from experience that even if an attorney has taken four months to write something, it's, they haven't spent that entire four months writing it. They may have spent like five minutes a day for those four months because they have other things that they're also working on, so.
Next hand I see is Vicki Disorder. Please come forward. While Vicki's coming up, I'll also state that we're still earning interest on the money that people are delinquent and their taxes are being charged interest. It also offsets the, um, lawyer fees, et cetera. So at a higher rate than we would ever receive at a bank at this point. So that's the penalty for being late on your tax. Now, Vicki, your turn.
Okay, um, since there's a discussion about the town's attorney, I'm just wondering, other than writing letters for delinquent taxes, what other functions the town attorney serves?
Good question. So the town's attorney is there, um, and it's probably a misnomer to call it the town's attorney because it's not. It's, it's an attorney that the town uses instead of having a staff attorney, which would be the altern, the alternative. So when the town has legal needs, we will first call the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, which furnishes us a number of hours per year of their staff attorney's services as part of our membership with the league. If they can't answer, if it's outside their area, we'll then go to the town attorney. So the town attorney right now is advising us on, um, a deed that was issued by the town in part of a tax sale that was found to be, um, it was found to have a flaw. So the town attorney is going to help us to get through that process of reconciling that situation with the person who bought the land. They're also advising us on, um, the town's acquisition of the small piece of land that's adjacent to the dog park that the town was able to get half grant funded and use, um, a town farm fund for the other match. So they're doing kind of that level of work for us. I don't, if there were an employment action, we would first go to the League of Cities and Towns and I have, since I've been town manager, I've had occasion once to go to the League of Cities and Towns and use their attorneys for employment advice, which allowed us not to have to go to the town attorney.
Okay, so you didn't have to pay for your legal, legal advice in that?
In that case, yes.
Okay. So is it just you as the town manager who, who uses our services or would say like, and the elected officials like the select board also use?
The select board could absolutely choose to use the town attorney for anything that they required legal services for.
And so that's kind of like standard operating procedure to use the town attorney?
And unless there is some other option like the league having, you know, the, the, the select board can also go to the League of Cities and Towns and see if they can use their staff attorney's time.
Okay, I, I'd like to clarify, that's if the select board as an entity
Yes.
has a legal issue that needs to be resolved. Select board members in their personal capacity would hire their own attorneys for any personal legal issues.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, okay, so it would be unusual for an elected official to use a attorney other than, uh, what, what's the name of those?
Carroll, Bow and Kite?
Yes. Well, it depends on the situation. And if you have an elected official who is, let's say, being sued in their official capacity, then they are entitled in their official capacity to rely on the services of an attorney that is hired by the town. If they're being sued in their personal capacity, then they often will have to, uh, rely on their own attorneys. If they're being sued in both their personal and professional capacity, then we would have to get legal advice on how to go forward on that. And that legal advice would first come from the town attorney. So I guess ultimately my question is that when the one's hired, uh, attorney other than the town attorney, that was an unusual circumstance?
Oh, that's interesting. So in that case, um, the trustees are independently elected and they don't so that the town's attorney, again, is, it's, it's an attorney who does lots of things for lots of clients and we happen to be a client of theirs. Um, if there's some legal need, like if the Historic Preservation Commission needed an attorney to go through some deed work or something like that, it would be within my authority as town manager to engage the town attorney to do that to benefit the Historic Preservation Commission as appointed officials. If the select board as an entity wanted to, they could go to that attorney. The select board in the past has also had occasion to go to not the town attorney. So the town attorney is not, um, an expert in employment law. And in my earliest days on the select board, the select board needed to go to another attorney. And it's not like you're going to another doctor and you need a referral from your regular doctor to go to this specialist. Like the town talked to its attorney and its attorney was like, I'm not really like into this aspect of employment law. I recommend you try someone else and we tried someone else.
Okay.
So could the trustees have chosen another attorney? I think it's absolutely within their, their scope. Um, they're also unique in that they fund their own operation. So that whatever action the select board takes would be paid for from the legal services line in the town budget in the administration department. But whatever investment advice the trustees require or legal advice the trustees require, they pay from the income of the trust.
Okay. So, um, in the select board meeting, meeting minutes of August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, it was stated there was some discussion of having the town's attorney discuss this topic with the outside attorney about his interpretation of the will and trust. Did that ever happen?
This had to do with the mosquito spraying.
August of twenty twenty-three, did we go to the town attorney on their interpretation of, what was the, the?
Of the will and trust.
Of Shirley Fire's will.
Correct.
We did not.
Okay. Any reason why not?
Um, we felt like at that point the people of Brandon would be paying for the trustees to have an attorney and then the people of Brandon would be paying for the town board or the select, the select board or the town manager to have an attorney and we would in effect be kind of in an adversarial position against ourselves that would be extremely costly very fast.
Thank you.
I can also say that one other time that I can think of in my ten years of being involved that we one time went to Jim Leary when we did our local options tax.
Right.
When we did our charter because it was way cheaper to use Jim Leary to do our charter and faster than it was to go to, uh, Middlebury. And, you know, so when we say we have a town attorney, it does, it's just an attorney that the town uses. They're not really, we don't have a contract with them that says we have to use them or whatever they right, right. It's no retainer. It's just, but they, they have handled our tax sales and what we're, we're looking at as far as Seth's report is that we have approximately seventy homes that are delinquent in their tax sale. And when that letter goes out, fifty of them will be brought current and will be in, in a better shape and then others will go to a payment plan or whatever. And eventually we'd get down to a tax sale type of position. So that's what pertains to his report.
Is there ever a situation?
Is there ever a situation where a citizen could request the services of the town attorney?
Think of a situation where the town's attorney would be made available at public expense to a citizen.
Okay. Any other questions? You guys hide behind that wall. I can't see you.
Good evening. Claire Stone. Who has oversight over the trust and how that money is spent? If you, if you read the will and the documentation and the history, there seems to be an arrow that points to how she intended money to be spent. And I'm wondering who, who, who oversees that? Because I personally, I'm fairly new here, less than six years. And I don't really understand how it works. I think it's fantastic that she did what she did. But I just, you never hear about how it, how it operates. Um, I really don't even remember who votes for the folks.
So I can answer that.
Can I say something first? Before, before she answers, I'm gonna let her answer. But we're, the, the questions at this point are supposed to be
Right.
about the town manager's report or questions of the town manager. But we'll try to answer this one because I think it's going to be a hot topic tonight. So I ran hope retired lawyer will take a shot.
Yes, I am not the town's attorney. I am no longer licensed to practice law, but what I can tell you is under, there's a state statute that provides that anytime funds are directed to a town, like through a bequest or through a grant from a non-federal entity, that, um, that is not a grant that the town has sought out. There must be a three-member board of trustees of public funds elected to officiate over that grant, for, for lack of a better term. So when Shirley Farr made her bequest to the town, under state law, three trustees of public funds were required to be elected. Um, and then once they are elected under state law, they serve certain terms. And at the end of those terms, they run for reelection. They are elected at town meeting day. They're on the ballot. Much like the select board, it's kind of staggered. So you're not voting for all three at once. They are elected officials. They are separate from the select board. We actually don't have any control over what they do. And that is by state law. And so to the extent that the trustees of public funds are doing things or you're interested in finding out more about what they're doing, then they, uh, they're the ones to ask. We, they currently, um, their meetings, uh, is something I'm kind of concerned about is their meetings are held at in our private headquarters. It's actually something the select board is talking about is whether we can require them to have their meetings in a more public setting to make them more accessible. But again, we don't really have a lot of control over them.
So where is the financial accountability? I mean, is there a ledger? Is there an accountant? Is somebody watching how money is spent? I just wonder how they operate. It's like, you know, uh, executing a will. Well, wanna be paying attention and see what's going on, maybe have some.
Well, just like with all executors of wills or, uh, money managers, uh, at some point we have to assume they act in good faith. Uh, if we don't believe they're acting in good faith, then, you know, there needs to be some follow-up perhaps.
Is there a procedure for that? I'm sorry. I just want.
So we are getting way outside. Yeah.
Could I interject that the trustees, they have since their inception, they have reported to the town in the town report book. So this year it's page 36, um, of the town report book that has the covered bridge on the cover. So that's, that's their summary of the requests they've received and the interest that they've earned and the principle that's there and so on and so forth. And the trustees, the way that the theory is, which is the right theory, is that they're accountable to, or the oversight, you asked the word oversight, I think. They're accountable to the voters ultimately. So the voters, uh, they're answerable to the voters because one of them is up for election every year. And if the voters want to, um, find out more information about the details than is here, I would approach them at a meeting or communicate with them, you know, ahead of a meeting and say, I, can you provide this information? And I would expect that you will have the information provided.
Thank you. Your, um, response I think was excellent. I feel like I have, you know, a picture frame and parts in there that make a picture to me about that. And just the, um, use of the attorney, uh, Bravo, uh, needed at one point to speak to the attorney. I think you might remember this. Do you, we talked with DOC. DOC said, it's up to your town. Talked with Dave Atherton and he talked to it. I'm sorry, her first name? Connie, yes. She's very lovely and very kind on the phone about, uh, us being mandated reporters as part of the job we do in restorative justice. And so that was the question that we used and it was very vague whether we were or not because it's out of the scope of DOC. So that was just a time. It was a five, 10 minute call.
And I would say that was an appropriate use of public funds to pay for the attorney.
Mission.
Yep.
I was at.
Oh, yeah. Don't. Permission first.
I'd like to make sure that one of the takeaways is that the trustees of public funds does not answer to the select board. The select board does not have any oversight over the trustees of public funds. That's a total separate. Uh, hang on. Brent has his hand up before.
Yes, Brent Bueller. Are the repairs required at the, uh, filter station, the pump station, are those under warranty?
Sir.
Yeah.
Thank God.
Uh, Vicki, did you have something else you want to say pertaining to the town manager's report? Okay, thank you. Billy Bullock.
Billy Bullock. Um, at a somewhat recent past meeting, we discussed about painting the crosswalk lines.
Can that wait until the public participation point?
It is for the
for the town manager.
Yes, so it's not warm enough.
Yeah, so we.
Was that, was that the question? Like?
Yes.
When will it happen? It will happen like it's gonna, they're gonna wait for it to be warm.
Cause since last Thursday, I witnessed, actually one of them was signed at 6:55. People not stopping at the crosswalks. And tonight I, I stood out there and there was not much traffic. One car coming. I'm standing five feet into that crosswalk into the street. And that guy just looked me straight in the eye and kept going.
You may have seen, um, after one of the recent meetings, we did try to put the cones with the little sign in the middle of the road. And those did not last two days. So they've been on the sides. They've been like on the sidewalk approach, one side or the other, sometimes both. But it's, um, those, the, in the middle of the crosswalk signs that we have had in the past are fairly expensive, but they're more durable. And that's why these cones with the little signs didn't work is that just the, the wind of the moving traffic was knocking them over too fast. But they will, um, they do plan to come in. The first thing that they will do, um, as part of the spring cleaning that we'll hear about is uh, the town crew will come in at like two or three in the morning, some morning and sweep. And that'll be a little bit inconvenient for the folks downtown. And then they'll let it get rained on a couple of times and then they'll let it warm up a little bit. And then at some other point, they'll say like, okay, this is the day. And they'll come in at two and three in the morning and paint the crosswalks when there's no traffic.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I usually stay quiet, but on, on that point, Tom White. Middlebury at their main rotary there, you know, by the new thing, they use flags. They have a bucket on each side of the street and you pick up a flag. You go over and you put it down and they seem to be very effective. They've had them for a couple of years. Just a thought. The cones make for an easy target.
Yeah, it's, it's been suggested and it's, it's nothing that I'm opposed to. And I think Jeremy has been checking out, there's a few crosswalks, even in our downtown, where there's no obvious place to put this receptacle. Like there's no post at one or both ends. That's actually why the crosswalk from the town office to the Four Conant Square property, that has nothing on either side. And that's why it doesn't have any kind of pedestrian signage on it.
Okay. I actually have one more crosswalk question.
Oh, boy.
Since we're on the subject. So right now, like from the town office to town hall and to across the street, there's like the long crosswalk and the short crosswalk. Has there ever been a discussion about doing a diagonal? So that, you know, now to cross, you have to go one and then the other. And so like doing a diagonal for people to do.
So to cross from?
Town hall.
Like the.
Directly to the other side rather than triangulating.
I'm not aware of, I don't know why that wasn't part of the original design. And right, Robert Frost says, if you're going to tear down a fence, the first thing you should ask is who put it there and why? So I gotta find out why there isn't one there before I say, yeah, let's paint another crosswalk. It might be fine, but there might be some reason where it wasn't recommended.
This is about his report or just another public comment? Okay, go ahead.
Dan Manning. Seth, how much money has the lawyer, how much has the town paid the lawyer to rewrite that? You know, how much it's cost the taxpayers?
The only thing that's in that, so I printed this, uh, what is this meeting? This was after the last select board meeting. We had only spent $229 in legal services since July. So I don't have any, any recollection that we signed a bill. We didn't sign a bill tonight to the attorneys, so they have not billed us yet.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. We're gonna leave the, uh, town manager alone and go to community development. Bill Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is my report for March 24th. First of all, I'd like to introduce to the public and the select board writ large, uh, Robin Douglas has started his new rec assistant. She's here tonight. She'll be working to support across all of our recreational programming, uh, uh, Colleen Wright left in beginning of January, middle of January. And Robin has come in to, uh, do rec programming. So she's fantastic. She's wonderful. Welcome to the family. She's already crushing it. So. With that, basketball's ended. I want to say special thanks to all the volunteer coaches. I will not name them for fear of me missing any of them. Uh, March 26th, now March 27th is the deadline for baseball and softball registration for grades three through six. Grades pre-K through two deadlines are April the 10th. Uh, March the 30th, there will be a spring equipment swap being held in collaboration with Otter Valley and the Pittsburgh Rec. 9:30 to 11:00 in the gym lobby at the high school. March 30th will also mark the first of four baseball and softball clinics for youth in grades, uh, three through six. It's a great way for, uh, our kids to work with OV varsity athletes to prepare for their upcoming seasons. Kids idol registration only has four spots left for the April 4th concert. The winner will perform at Brandon, uh, Brandon Idol Finale on March 16th.
May.
Oh, yeah, May 16th. They'll do it in the future as opposed to the past. Uh, Brandon Idol, uh, classic rock concert is to be held on April the 11th. Doors open at 6:30, uh, shows at seven. Our swimming lesson registration will open up on April 1st. No fooling. Thank you. All right. Uh, three one-week sessions starting in June to be held at the Brandon Inn. The vendor application registration is open for the July 5th Brandon Independence Day celebration. Spots will fill fast. On March 29th, this Saturday, there'll be a concert upstairs at the town hall. It's the Electric Bear is the name of the group. It used to be Telesonics. It's Americana music. It's free, uh, our free will offering. And that is sponsored by Red Clover Ale Company. I'd also like to let people know that, uh, we are, as everyone knows or maybe not know, we're in the middle of a scoping study for a connector path between Forestdale and Brandon. And we're at the phase now where we're doing outreach to landowners along some of the possible alternatives. Those landowners will be receiving in the mail. It's about 130 of those landowners will be receiving invitation to fill out a survey with regard to that scoping study. And this is a reminder, this was something that was funded by way of a grant, approved local option tax back in 23 to offset the cost of this. This is just a scoping study. This is not a commitment to future funding or project development. This is just a study that has been funded. We're looking to see how much it would, where the path would go and how much it possibly would cost. Again, this is not a commitment for future funding. This is not a commitment for future funding.
Well said, Bill. Question for Bill Moore from the board.
I'm glad you asked. It is not.
Um, I have a question, um, about when I've been noticing like the posters for the wrestling at the town hall. So is that something that's done in conjunction with the rec department? Does the town have anything to do with this or does the town get a cut of the proceeds or how does?
That's a straight rental. That, so they're renting, they're providing insurance, they're renting, we're doing no wraparound services for that.
Okay.
They're renting the town hall for that night. They bring in their insurance. They do the setup. They do the clean. That's not a collaboration with us. That's a straight rental of the town hall.
Okay. And when we rent the town hall for things like that, is that at a fair market value for rentals?
I would say no affair market. I would say it's a pretty good deal to rent the town hall. You know, the, you know, we based our pricing on a fantastic group that no longer exists. The Friends of the Town Hall kind of came up with a pricing structure. It's less for Brandon residents than it is for outside organizations. It's less for businesses than it is for non, I mean, it's more for business than it is for nonprofits. It definitely could be revisited, especially now as the town takes over management of the space year round. Uh, we may revisit that. Um, you know, our number one priority, I guess, is making sure that people are using the space. The Friends and the Brandon community have invested a lot of money and time and energy and effort to turn this into a beautiful space for people to use. So we want people in here as much as possible. This meeting room is available for rental. The upstairs available rentals separately or altogether. And again, we also now have rental income for an office space that's right behind everyone that's sitting here in the, uh, in this space. So, yeah, I mean, the, the prices could be revisited.
Well, I was just wondering, and I mean, and the fact that there is like an offset for residence and difference between nonprofit and business, I'm fine with that. I was just wondering.
Other questions from board members? Questions from the public for Mr. Moore pertaining mostly to his, his report? None heard. Moving on. Uh, item seven on our agenda, consider appointment to the energy committee. Pleasure of the board.
I will move to appoint Serge, Sir. More, the energy committee for an indefinite term.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board members? We interviewed Serge at the beginning of the meeting. That's why we're in executive session. So to call a question, all in favor of naming Serge as our newest volunteer, say aye.
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 Opposed? No one.
And.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, sir.
Becca Ballant recently told me that, uh, Vermont is held together with duct tape, twine and volunteerism. And so thank you for helping hold us together.
Item eight, Vermont's 250th anniversary appointments. Uh, Mr. Moore.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, this, some members of the select board may recall that, uh, the state of Vermont, uh, I want to say 23, uh, they adopted a resolution that Brandon participate in the Vermont 250th anniversary and Declaration of Independence and American Revolution. That's next year, if you guys are doing your maths right. I reached, uh, Seth at the time, uh, had reached out to the select board, I mean, to the high school to see if they had any kids that would be interested in participating. They posted to their students and shared it with their social studies department, but no volunteers were forthcoming. We do have some interest that's been posted, uh, and I would let you know that Dr. Kevin Thornton, a retired UVM instructor, author and a filmmaker, um, we met with him. He has a concept. Um, he's also reached out to, uh, two other community members. Ellen Knapp, who's a former Neshybe teacher and is really involved with the Memorial Day Flower Girl Celebration. And, uh, somebody by the name of Sophie Moore, who is a senior at, uh, a senior at Otter Valley, uh, who is looking to become a history teacher in her studies after school, uh, after high school. And, yeah, and Dr. Thornton is here if you had any questions for him. This is a, uh, this is not a regular committee. Uh, they'll disband after the celebration. They'll disband after the celebration has been celebrated. Ask you guys to consider appointing the three of them.
Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to appoint the three of them.
Three volunteers.
I'll second.
We have a second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? You'll add more if people, if you need more people to join in if they volunteer.
Without a doubt.
Pardon?
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt. Okay. Here's our first three, all in favor of, uh, appointing these three volunteers. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one. Serge, you have now been bypassed as you're not the most recent guy in. Didn't last long. There you go.
Yep, there you go.
Uh, okay. Item nine, consider a request to close Park Street Friday, May 2nd. From 5:45 to 6:30 PM for Halloweene Witch Walk. Mr. Moore.
Yes, so this is, let me say, to preface, is not a Brandon recreation event, but a Colleen Wright Events production that's working with the Chamber and the Downtown Brandon Alliance. It's the same concept as they had with the zombie walk that they had as a part of the, uh, solar eclipse celebration about a year ago. People were really jazzed about marching down Park Street in costume. This is part of a larger project they're doing to celebrate the half, six months out from Halloween. Halloween tends to be very popular. It's not my favorite holiday, but it's a lot of people's favorite holiday. And, uh, again, they're working with the Chamber and the Downtown Brandon Alliance to do events on Friday and Saturday. This would be a closing of Park Street. For as long, as long as it would take for this group to walk from one end of Park Street to the other to a celebration they'll be having out behind the Brandon Inn.
Pleasure of the board. Or questions?
I got a question. There's no other, you're closing the main street or one of the main streets in town. There's no other area to have this, like Esterbrook or anything?
I think that the thought, especially with the Chamber and the Downtown Brandon Alliance being a part of this, that their thought was to have this be a part of the downtown and Park Street, as far as streets go within the downtown and close to where they're going to be having their activities would, Park Street made the most sense for them. Again, speaking on their behalf.
And has there been outreach to the residents of Park Street to gauge their, uh, interest or feelings about the closure? Cause I think, I mean, it won't be just for the time of walking. They'll be like, they'll have to close it a little before and it'll stay closed after kind of to clear.
Uh, 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 you know, 5:45 would be the closing time and it would be open at the point at which it takes them. The parade starts at six. Again, from six to, you know, we had 6:30 as the outside end of that, but it's the walk from the end of Park Street to the other end of Park Street.
What about?
Three times.
Traffic control.
Traffic control, we've spoken with the chief and the chief of the fire department as well has offered to help out with the closing. Um, it's a fairly simple closing. This is not, uh, and it's not on the scale of the Brandon Independence Day celebration or even on the scale of the last time you guys voted to approve the closing of Park Street, which was the, uh, scout scout parade, which started up on Park Street Extension. It's a lot more people. This is the part of Park Street from the top of where it meets Marble Street to the bottom of where it meets Route 7. And then they head into the lot, Lot A and in behind the Brandon.
And, and who would be paying for the officers? Um, well, we only have one officer.
Now, so the plan would be to have the fire department help close the street by putting cones out on either side. And they're qualified to do that.
And they would be staying there to direct traffic or redirect traffic or?
Yes.
Okay. And would they be doing that as volunteers?
Volunteer Department, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, Brandon wouldn't be paying for any.
The town of Brandon would not be putting any costs for this.
Okay. And Colleen will have liability insurance to cover anything that happens during that.
Between Colleen and the Chamber, as the Chamber is also co-sponsored, I would say, yes, there's liability assurance.
Okay.
Um, with the, uh, walk during the eclipse last year, worth any feedback as it related to the actual closure of the road? And any negative impacts from that?
I heard nothing. Um, but I, yeah, nobody complained about it. And usually people do complain when they've got complaints. I've not heard any complaints about it. I, again, I think that the success of that, um, the people that, some of the same people are involved. Some Park Street, a Park Street resident, I know for sure, uh, Scribners are involved in the planning for this. I think there was the excitement around that. And again, the celebration or extra celebration of, of Halloween. Yes, it's preferable to starting Halloween in September, but.
So, um, so I only, um, oh, I had another question. It doesn't have to do with the walk itself. Um, it, I had a question about on the Saturday, the second there's like a market in the Central Park. And I know that's also the day that the cleanup is like doing their bag distribution and stuff like that. And have they made arrangements to like, make sure there's room for everyone?
That I'm not aware of. I think that they're submitting a vendor permit to the town manager. Town manager would have an opportunity to.
Okay.
Approve that vendor permit for that day. I know that that, so it's the third and that's green up day. And in years past, we've actually put a, we put a dumpster there. And I think that we stopped putting a dumpster there. Now we have a dumpster at the transfer station, but I think Jim Leary is on, I've seen Nancy Leary's, he's a green up day coordinator. You'd be able to confirm whether or not they're putting a dumpster at, uh, they usually would put one in that parking space or not parking space, the space next to the gazebo.
Right.
Um, but that's usually a spot where people meet up to grab green up day bags.
Okay.
Uh, but again, I think the last, at least the last year, maybe the last two years, they've had that dumpster be at. There he is.
Hey folks, can I, can I jump in real quick? Uh, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Saturday morning in Central Park, yeah, we will be handing out green up day bags and rune assignments in the gazebo from eight to 10:00 AM, uh, as we've been doing for the last few years. So, uh, if I, I would hate to have to change that location because I think people have grown accustomed to it. And we don't do the dumpster anymore. Uh, it's down at the transfer station. Uh, people were abusing the dumpster, so we had to relocate it. And everybody's welcome to attend. It's the first Saturday in May, eight to 10:00, Central Park.
Green up Vermont. And the Kirby won't be run until late in the afternoon, so you can do both.
I'd just like to, as far as closing Park Street on a Friday, for, for me personally, I just remember the airstream problem when it was, um, blessed by the chamber and whatever. And then we had some screaming and I still have nightmares of that evening of, uh, Park Street people being very upset. And I, I can, I understand because their street gets used all the time. So I would like to at least have assurances that, uh, the Park Street residents are in favor and not going to come down here yelling at us for closing their street again.
So I, I won't make that assurance myself. I do know that that group, um, I think through the person of, I think Harmony Van Eaton went door to door with flyers. These are the people on Park Street and, and a organizer of this event is Barbara Scribner of Park Street. And the scale is slightly different.
Oh, yeah.
Closing for 45 minutes versus two days of campers parking in front of people's houses. I just.
Okay. Let's add for the record if any, uh, Park Street residents are reading this or are clear, uh, can come let us know.
I cannot hear Jeff.
All right.
Okay, I saw two hands and you have not spoken yet tonight, Jan. So you're gonna, Jan's gonna be first and then we'll vote a flare, okay?
Just to repeat for Charlie, if any Park Street residents are reading this later and have any objections or concerns about this.
Uh, please come let us know.
Jan, you had your hand up, I think.
So personally, I don't think this is a very good idea to close. I know the state doesn't like when you close Route 7. Let us do it for 4th of July. At some point, they're going to say, no more. Now for the zombie walk. The Boy Scouts, that was an honor to have that parade here. It's, you know, once in how many years does that ever happen? So now you're closing it for this. When you have Esterbrook, why would you do this? You know, you're affecting so many people that drive through this town and they're going to look and go, what's going on? They closed a street for what? You know, they don't know any history or thought behind it. To me, this can be accomplished down at Esterbrook so easy. It doesn't affect anyone, doesn't affect traffic, people on Park Street. To me, if we start shutting down Route 7 for whatever reason, even if it's just for an hour or less than an hour.
Um, so it's, they're not looking to close down Route 7. It's, it's Route 73 through Town Park Street to the end.
Oh, that's true. With 73, I meant not seven.
So I. Bye bye.
But, you know, I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, we've got to think twice about just deciding to shut down a road. It should be something for more.
Now Claire.
Your trucks rerouted.
Don't talk till you're at the microphone.
We're gonna hear you.
I'm here. Where are the trucks rerouted?
The trucks would be rerouted down High Street, I would assume at that point, if they were coming down 73.
Can't go High Street based on the signs of weight. Can't do it.
Just tell me where I think they would go. That's.
Well, that doesn't sound like a good idea because, uh, that pack is, is based on weight capability. And it's not weighted for tractor trailers and log trucks. Is, I believe.
Are Marble Street and High Street weighted differently?
Off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
So if they're already on Marble Street, it wouldn't make a difference going through to Park Street, to High Street.
High Street. That would be.
Last comment on this one.
Ken Manning, you know, instead of closing Park Street down, having to use the sidewalks, it's what they're there for. And just close it temporarily, allow, allow them to cross one side on that and they come right back down on sidewalks.
Interesting idea.
I think that's actually a pretty good solution.
Do, are we under any sort of deadline to take action on this at this meeting?
I would say no, I think they wanted to give as much notice as possible. Again, I, you know, not a branding recreation event, the Chamber, Colleen Wright Events, they're doing this. I'm holding water and letting you guys know and giving you an opportunity to consider it. Um, I certainly know the event is May 3rd. So I know there's two select board meetings between now and then. If you guys wanted more information, I would strongly suggest, you know, if you didn't want to make a decision tonight to reach out to Colleen Wright Events and the Chamber and the Downtown Brandon Alliance, who are organizing Halloweene.
I, I might suggest that we table this until at least one more meeting and try to get some more community feedback or maybe get.
And invite the organizers to come talk about it.
Right.
Rather than, you know, force our community development director to try and answer questions.
I would say I can give them the sidewalk idea and see if that appeals to them.
I'm going to move to table, uh, agenda item number nine regarding closing Park Street until, uh, the next select board meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, discussion and tabling? I think it's good. I'd like to give more assurances as what things are before.
Sounds good.
Okay, all in favor of tabling it and coming back in two weeks?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nobody against tabling, not tabling, so we're tabled. Um. Pardon?
Oh, three weeks until.
Three weeks. We are, oh my goodness. Ratify contract modifications with New England Police Benevolent Association. Want to address this? We have agreed to this in principle.
I, I can address it, Mr. Chair, or you could if you want to. Um, the main goals of the work that the select board and the town management team have been doing with the police union have been retention and recruitment. We have agreed, uh, to, in principle, to a contract modification with three main features. The first is a starting step for a certified police officer of $34 per hour. The second main provision is credit for years of service in other agencies for certified officers coming to Brandon. So the practice currently is that if you're an officer in some other town for three or four years and you come to Brandon, we place you at step one. And, uh, this would place you at a step commensurate with crediting your previous years of service, probably three or four. And the third major change in the memorandum is to extend the contract out one further year to June 30th, 2028.
So we had given Mr. Hopkins the authority to pursue this. You have all been communicated with by Mr. Hopkins. So I believe this should be a motion to accept.
Just as a, a quick question beforehand, can you give a, a general idea of where $34 an hour as a starting salary fits in Vermont in general?
Oh, I think it places us in a very good position. I know that, um, in working with the union, that one of the other communities, I wouldn't say nearby, but you know, a fairly well-resourced community is in the $30 range. And this will position Brandon as being significantly, you know, higher than that 10, plus 10% more than that community is paying right now. Thank you.
I move that we ratify the memorandum of agreement by and between the New England Police Benevolent Association, Local 422 and the town of Brandon, making the changes that have been, uh, set out by the town manager.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chair, I might say for benefit of you and the community that after the board's action, if the board votes to ratify, the union has already ratified, which is a little bit unorthodox in the order. But the board ratification, if it's forthcoming, will then make it not subject to negotiation anymore. And the memorandum in full can be released to any interested party, so it becomes public information.
Question? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of, uh, approval on this item? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one. Anything else on? Please. Who? Hand up in the back.
Vicki.
You stated that the new rate is $34 per hour. Can you, um, tell us what the former rate was?
Twenty seven.
Six and some change.
I want to say it was 2678, but I could be.
That's the number.
While you're, while you're looking at that.
Yeah.
But we'll move on. Is that okay? Or another hand up? Come right up.
Miss Conlin, I'm wondering if police officers are hired in town, are they going to be required to live locally, not halfway across the state?
We can require them to live within the on-call, um, distance that is in the contract. So we cannot require.
It's not 60 miles.
It is, uh, that, that one, I just need a minute to look for. I can tell you the rate. The rate was 2691.
Okay. Before the distance with a timeframe. And, and I, I would, I, I'm assuming you're, you're leading towards the fact that our police chief lives so a distance away. And that's not a union, just so there is a separation of those two items.
It's 45 minutes.
Pardon?
Forty five minute response time to the police station.
Okay, so that's that. Uh, we are, item 11 is a status on the open ethics complaint that we received two weeks ago.
That's me.
How are you?
So, um, as the public is aware, the select board received a complaint under the new state law for complaints against municipal officers. The law requires us to investigate the complaint. Although the town adopted a policy regarding conflicts of interest in 2019, the procedure laid out for responding to complaints is, um, imprecise as it relates to investigating complaints. So we reached out to Vermont League of Cities and Towns and to the State Ethics Board for assistance and. and uh, were basically advised that we were on our own to figure this out, that, um, Vermont League of Cities and Towns, uh, could offer general training that they were still working on. The Ethics Board can offer, uh, individual municipal officials advice on their own questions, like, I'm about to do something, is it ethical? But they have, they specifically expressly stated that they do not assist with the actual investigations. So, um, for that reason, uh, we need to, not only, we, we have to figure out how to investigate the thing before we investigate it. So we're asking everyone for patience while we figure this out. Um, and we want to move forward in a way designed to give everyone involved the due process to which they are entitled. Um, one thing I would add is, um, as we stated when we got the, uh, complaint, it had to do with actions by elected officials who were not members of the Select Board. And because they are separately elected officials, there's not much the Select Board can do, even if we find an actual violation of the state conflict of interest laws. So, uh, I'm thinking that as stuff like this keeps coming up, the legislature may need to revisit exactly how they think this should be done, and whether separate elected boards need to do their own, you know, it's. Let's put it this way, the legislation that we have been provided is less than helpful, and hopefully the legislature will figure it out as that time goes by, that, that we're not the only town that is kind of struggling with it.
Okay. Um, I see your hand, Vicki, so you may come up.
So it was my understanding earlier this year that you guys are basically appointed as the Ethics Board. So wouldn't you then be acting, acting in a different capacity than Select Board? And wouldn't these other individuals be then answerable to you as the Ethics Board?
We have not gotten that feedback from the State Ethics Committee or from VLCT. That's still one of the questions that we're trying to get through. As we stated before, this is a, a brand-new law with no guidance. Um, and, um, our first complaint is one that is a very interesting, uh, complex scenarios. It would, it would have been much easier if somebody complained about me, and then they could all sit there and yell at me. But because we've got different groups involved, it's gonna, it's gonna take us some time.
And I, I don't think it would be accurate to say that each town's legislative Select Board is appointed as an Ethics Board. That's not what the statute says. The statute merely talks about the board receiving complaints and investigating them. It doesn't actually talk about how we are supposed to deal with complaints against parties that would not normally be under the Select Board's jurisdiction. That's one of the things that we are trying to figure out, because it is not clear in the statute that that is the case.
Our direct jurisdiction realistically is those of us sitting here at this front table, town employees, and appoint it, appoint someone that's appointed to one of our committees. Um, and other than that.
So if, for example, someone complained about the town clerk, there was, there'd be nothing you could do?
I think, Vicki, you're right. I think the town clerk, the trustees of public funds, and the library trustees would, and the moderator, would be your elected officials who are not answerable to the Select Board in normal situations.
And there's actually one, only one library trustee that is an elected official. Um, the rest of the library trustees are. There's two, and they're not subject, the, the rest of the library trustees are not subject to the municipal.
May I ask which library trustees, which positions are elected?
Current, well, it's, it's any two trustees to the board, which has eleven members, are elected. Uh, the current two are David Roberts and Matt Clouser, who was just recently elected.
And anyone else on the library would be answerable to the Select?
No, no one else would be answerable to Select Board, and they are not listed. And in fact, I don't believe library trustees are listed in the Code of Ethics, even if elected.
It's worth noting, the Brandon Library is in a slightly different sphere, because it's not a municipal library. It's an independent organization. So, but yeah, what Cecil's driving at is, is determining what our authority is as it relates to these ethics is complicated, because the state doesn't specifically give us any authority. Um, and we're trying to ascertain.
Okay. Right, and the statute actually lists who is subject to the code, and, uh, library trustees, either elected or not, are, are not listed.
Where, where do you find that information?
This is the statute, uh, chapter sixty, subject night, section nineteen ninety-one, Municipal Code of Ethics. And section twelve lists what municipal officer or officer means, and it is only municipal officers or officers that are subject to the Code of Ethics. And it, so I can tell you, the list includes any member of a legislative body of a municipality, which would be the Select Board. Any member of a quasi-judicial body of a municipality, which would be like the development, the DRB. Any of it.
Civil Authority.
In the board.
Board of Abatement, and the Select Board in certain search.
Correct. Uh, any individual who holds a position of or exercises the function of any of the following positions in or on behalf of any municipality. Advisory Budget Committee Member, Auditor, Building Inspector, Cemetery Commissioner, Chief Administrative Officer, Clerk, Collector of Delinquent Taxes, Department Heads, First Constable, Lister or Assessor, Mayor, Moderator, Planning Commission Member, Road Commissioner, Town or City Manager, Treasurer, Village of Town Trustee, Trustee of Public Funds, or Water Commissioner. So, these are the people that are subject to the Municipal Code of Ethics. What the statute does not tell us is how to deal with the fact that some of those people that are subject to the Municipal Code of Ethics are not, when they're not subject to the jurisdiction of the Select Board. And that's what we're trying to figure out, how we deal with those complaints, and that's why we're asking the public for patience.
Um, I just want to say at this time, uh, thank the Board Chair for bringing the, um, Community Valley, or the Valley Community Center to our attention, so that the community could indeed vote on that, and not just a handful of people who might have otherwise showed up at that, um, school board meeting, so thank you. And I also like to say, um, that at one of the school board meetings preceding that, um, vote, most of, most of the school board was genuinely concerned about, um, the fact that they believed, um, that was going to be on an Australian ballot. And so they had mistakenly assumed that the procedure was going to be the same as it was during COVID. And so, anyway, but there was one individual who said uh, about that vote taking place at that meeting, that it will be the voter's fault for not paying attention. And I would just like to say to the Ethics Board, or representatives such as you are, that it is very hard for the public to pay attention when the meeting's not in a public setting or has a specific date. So those are, um, a couple of issues I hope that will be addressed in future. And, um, I have a couple of questions, and I don't know if you want me to wait till public comments, or if I could just ask them now.
Well, if public comment is the next thing on the agenda. Pardon? Then let's, let me move to the Ethics, if you want to sit up front, if you don't want to go too far away.
So you, Cecil, you just stated that the trustee of public funds is subject to the Ethics.
So, yeah.
Okay, so.
We're trying to figure out.
Did they, did they do that training too?
So they are required to do the conflict of interest training, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Um, as of January first of this year, they are required to do that interest, conflict of interest training. I do not know if they have done it.
And so the fact that you don't have responsibility over them, so if somebody wanted to make a complaint to that committee, who would they make the complaint to?
So the Select Board is the designated recipient of all complaints that are under the jurisdiction of the town, meaning not the, not of the school, not of the fire district. And I did, as town manager, following the meeting, when the Select Board designated themselves as the receiving body, and me as the liaison to the State Ethics Commission, I did comb through that same list that Cecil just read, and I sent a message to each of those people saying, your position is, actually, you should have got one from me.
I did.
Yeah, your position is required to do this training. I gave the link. Many of them have done it, some have not. I believe the legislature set a, a fairly late deadline of September-ish or something. Like, I think there's time yet. I'll send gentle reminders, you know, at some point, there will be a list generated of who should have but hasn't yet.
But Jan, you have, you, you've put your finger on exactly the problem we have. It's that, under the statute, we are designated as the recipient of the complaint and are required to investigate it, but then some of the entities that are subject to it are entities that are not otherwise subject to our review, and we don't know, you know, we don't know what they do. Um, and so trying to figure out how to investigate it, and whether even at the end of it, you know, if we investigate it and come to the end of it, and we reach a conclusion, whether that makes any difference, it's.
Thank you.
So.
We hope it would create an awareness so that they would do things differently. So, so now we're coming to public comment, and, um, we, we got this little thing on public comment. Oh.
We're getting there.
We're, we're, that's where we're going to, and, but I wanted to read this first, because I got this new, new little tidbit that's advising us, and so I always just chuck into public comment, and I think at times people that think we're going to solve their problem right away. And this, this kind of comes from Middlebury, I believe, but it says, "Public comment is an opportunity for community members to briefly comment upon and share concerns about items that are not on our posted agenda. We're not in a position to discuss unwarranted items, unwarranted items in depth, or try to resolve them now. We will, however, enter your comments into the public record, and if appropriate, direct town management teams to address them. Uh, we'll place your concerns on the agenda for a future meeting." So it's, again, we can't solve everything, but we're going to try. Barbara, you're first.
I'm Barbara White, and this is Brief, and in fact, I'm going to give you an email at the end if you have further questions. On April fifth, from noon to two o'clock, there will be an event in town at Central Park called Hands Off Twenty Twenty-Five. It's part of a national day of mobilization for those Americans who are angered by the actions of the President, Congress, and the billionaire Elon Musk. In disagreement and frustration with the unconstitutional actions taken by this administration, people will be gathering in Central Park on the fifth as a group known as Indivisible Brandon. This group is one of several hundred groups under the national group, Indivisible. Please go to indivisible.org for more detailed information. A core principle behind all indivisible and hands-off events is a commitment to nonviolent action. We expect all participants to seek to de-escalate any potential confrontation with those who disagree with our values. In fact, a de-escalation Zoom training is going to be held on April second. Press releases will be appearing in the local papers. For more information, you can Google Hands Off Indivisible Brandon. You may also email me at barbara@indivisiblebrandon.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Barbara? Could she give that written, um, statement to Seth so that I can put all that information into the comments?
Glad to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, um, I'm going to go over here, because Vicki, you've talked a lot so far, so we got to spread it around. Kevin Thornton.
Kevin Thornton, hi, Sherlene. Uh, I want to thank the Select Board for, uh, appointing the committee, the History Committee, and I want to address very briefly two things that I think are very critical of Brandon in this regard. Um, Brandon is unique in the United States, um, in, in two ways. One is our tradition that begins in January of eighteen thirty-four with the formation of the Brandon Anti-Slavery Society. And there's a straight line from that to our tradition of flower girls. And I believe we're the only place in the United States that has this tradition of flower girls. As you know, it's beautiful and it's meaningful, and I think it's something that, um, Brandon can, um, can claim as, uh, as uniquely important. The second is that Brandon resident, Thomas Davenport, was the most active person in the world between eighteen thirty-six and the end of eighteen forty, working on the development of electrical devices. And he was also a visionary when it came to what we today would call green energy. He didn't have that terminology, but, but, but Davenport believed fervently that electrical power would be the most important source of power in world history, and that one of the reasons it was so important was because it was clean. So we have two, um, nationally, and in, in the second case, even a world, uh, claim to historical importance. Um, every town in Vermont is going to be just doing something for the two-hundred-and-fifty anniversary. I think we can do something really special, and I think that, um, something that the town can make hay of, and that, uh, the Chamber should possibly be involved in as well. And then, uh, as for the other people on the board, uh, Helen Knapp, uh, who's a, a quiet sort of person, who's devoted her life to public service, is the single most important individual in preserving the, uh, the tradition of, um, the flower girls. She's led the flower girls and organized that for over forty years, and continues to do so. And then Sophie Moore, um, is, was a flower girl, I think in two thousand fourteen, right? Two thousand, two thousand fourteen to thirteen, um, she's been, um, uh, she's as interested in history as any young person in this town, maybe more so. And, uh, she's a wonderful addition to this committee. She's full of ideas, and she'll have all kinds of ideas about outreach that, uh, the two older people on the board don't. So, um, just again, wanted to thank you. We, we can do some exciting things. I think we can do things to put Brandon on the map.
Great. Thank you, Kevin.
Keep us on the loop.
Doug, I just wanted to say, while I was sitting here, um, I received an email from Trish Welch, Tricia Welch, who was interested in participating in that committee as well, so you, you have another person.
Another one. Hey, um, I see hands, but I saw Vicki's first, so I'm going to go to Vicki, and then I, it's like Ken and Jan.
Sorry to hold you up, Chris. Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. Um, my first question is the legal distinction between the village and the district.
Mr. Hopkins, you have a legal definition?
The town is the whole six square miles, and there is no legal entity that is the village in Brandon. It's an informal designation.
Of, of the town? Of the six-mile town?
No, of the center.
Of the center.
So the way it's used today, if you're referring to Shirley Fire's will, I'm not sure how it was used when Shirley Fire made her request. Today, when we talk with V-Trans, or we talk with economic development, community development up there at the state, you know, they're, when they talk about Brandon Village, they're basically talking about, like, rough parameters would be the spots where we post the signs that say, "State Highway Begins, State Highway Ends." So like, around the Legion to maybe not quite as far as Steinberg Road, something like that, Route Seven, and bottom of Champlain Street before it kind of flattens out, out to Wheeler Road Fork.
That's pretty much what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I also have another question, probably Cecil will be answering this one. I'm just wondering, like, if, say, one of the Select Board members, um, was, well, maybe Select Board's not a good example, but if a person were. in a position where they could benefit personally from their position and they chose not to use the town's attorney, but a different attorney, would it be a conflict if they used either their personal attorney or their business attorney?
So. Let me see if I have your hypothetical right. So you're, you're thinking of someone who is subject to the code of ethics?
Correct.
And who may have a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest. And they consult their own attorney?
Rather than the town's attorney?
Whether they have a conflict of interest.
Or to determine anything with regards to their position?
I, so I guess I'm not entirely sure. So let, let me see if I can come up with a hypothetical. So a person who is subject to the municipal code of ethics is in a position to make a decision and they may benefit personally from that decision in a way that fits the statutory term of the conflict of interest.
Or that the determination could align with, more so with their beliefs rather than the technical or legal matters involved?
So I'm, I'm, I'm reluctant to try and answer that in that the decision of a person who is subject to the ethics complaint to decide whether they have a conflict of interest. The, the statute lays out what the conflicts of interest are. And they even provide, if you go to the state board website, they have a little kind of flow chart, do I have a conflict of interest?
Which website is that?
This is if you go to the Vermont State Ethics Commission website. It's under the resources link.
Okay.
It's this handy little flow chart. That's a personal decision that they first have to make. And how they choose to make that and whom they choose to consult to make that decision is up to them. That in and of itself is not an ethical problem. So, you know, the person has to decide for themselves based on the information they have and based on what the state ethics board says, you know, what may or may not be a conflict of interest. If they decide for themselves that they don't have a conflict and they are free to make the decision one way or another, that can always, everything can always be challenged. You know, whether they make the right decision or not, someone can always challenge that. But I don't think that consulting with their own private attorney to help them make their own decision is itself a problem.
And nobody can consult with the town's attorney at the town's expense. I mean, anything that goes to the town's attorney.
Right.
It goes to the town manager because it's a town issue. I mean, not his own personal issue or something like that.
And can I contribute the other side of that? Which is that if a town official has need of legal counsel and they choose to go to their own attorney rather than to the town attorney, they would be doing that at their own expense because they cannot incur legal costs on behalf of the town. I can incur legal costs.
Right. And the one thing that the ethics commission is helpful with is if you are someone that's subject to the code, you can call them and ask for advice from them as to how to proceed.
So, but you've said that they're not being all that helpful in what you guys need to.
And how to, and how to investigate complaints. They are not being helpful.
Is that something that the board has considered reaching out to the town attorney for guidance on?
I would say I have, and I'm hoping that we're all gonna learn to play nice in the playground and that we're not gonna spend taxpayer dollars needlessly. That would, I mean, we would have to have something that. I can't imagine what, what scope it would have to be on.
I would hesitate to go to the town attorney on this because it's so uncertain. Like ethics, municipal ethics in Vermont is so new that I don't think that they will be able to, like, find case law. They won't be able to find any kind of, like, jurisdictional opinions, like, there's.
So you're basically setting the precedent with this first complaint.
Right.
Right now.
And again.
So you're setting the bar of ethics for everyone in the town.
Well, we're not setting the bar of ethics. What we're trying to figure out is how to investigate it in the first place. And what I am anticipating we are going to be doing is looking to see if other towns have developed a procedure that makes sense to us. And this is again, why we might be resolving this as quickly as we had hoped.
Okay.
Okay, I, yeah, Brett hasn't talked all night. Did, you wanna let Jan? Jan had her hand up before you. So I'll go to Jan, ladies and gentlemen, and then we're coming to you.
So a month or so ago, I came with a complaint about the parking on the bridge. I just wanted to give you an update. I appreciate the signs on the bridge that say no parking. And when I came out of the town hall Thursday night, there was one car parked illegally and there was two cars that just happened to pull up as I was walking across the street. So I went over to them and I told them, "You can't park there. It's illegal. Look at the sign." Sure, they just went around the block, but.
They're like, "Get away from this lady."
Thanks, Jen.
Now, Brett.
Yes, Brett Buehler, and this is about the Shirley Fire thing as well. Article 12 of her will leaves two-twentieths thereof to the said town of Brandon, Vermont, to be used by its primary, for, to be used it primarily for proper sewage disposal, drainage of swamps, and other sanitary improvements. And any amounts not needed and expended for such purposes shall be used for spraying trees or in the general improvement of the village in ways not sufficiently provided by taxation. Then in 2020, the trustees of public funds, they up, they did an interpretation and they translated that to today's standards, which I guess is sanitary improvements, improvement of the village in ways not sufficiently provided by taxation and wetland and water management. But I look back eight years and I haven't seen anything for sewage or sanitation granted from them, which is the primary purpose of this. So I know you don't have control over them, but you certainly can request funds from them for sanitation sewage. Now, I know a few winters ago, well, one of the sewage lines broke in the river. That's a sewage thing. You know, there, there's union streets coming up with sewage. There's the sewer plant. You, you know, you just went through a process of solidifying funds monthly to pay that bond. And, and everybody's bill changed to do that. So there are ways to use this fund for sewage, which is what she left it for. Now, if I left a trust fund for dogs and it was just being used for cats, I'd roll over my grave and say, "Why the hell did I leave it? I'm sorry I did." And, and I, I think these funds are not being used appropriately. And it really is a problem. It really is a problem. So that's just, you know.
Well, it's a good point. Mr. Town Manager, do you know, have we, I know we've asked them for funds for mosquito spraying and that there was a large debate over whether spraying on water was the same as spraying on trees. Have we asked for money for sewage?
I don't believe, since I've been involved in the board and so forth, that the town has asked the trustees for anything for sewage.
That's why it's there. So I know you can't control the trustees, but you can control some of the funds.
It's worth the consideration.
Very good point. Thank you very much. Ken?
Hey, Manny. Bill, this is directed towards you. Nothing personal, but the other day when I talked to you on the phone, you talked about the trucks running the red lights and things. You said you were gonna call the chief, not the chief, call me. Did you, yeah, I've never received word, a phone call from the chief.
I did not call the chief that day. I know you'd said you were leaving town at that point. And I'll be quite honest, like, it completely escaped my mind. But I told you that also that you could reach out to the chief with any sort of concerns around policing and that he would be responsive and that he didn't respond to you, that we'd make sure he was responsive and that you'd asked about the possibility of observing people breaking the law. And I told you that you could indeed go down, fill out an affidavit, and they could charge someone based on your affidavit.
I left on a Thursday and I didn't get back till Monday. So I was under the impression that you're gonna be calling the chief.
And I did not do that and I'm sorry. But I'll definitely make sure I text him from this meeting to make sure he calls you tomorrow. So you can go down there and fill out an affidavit about the trucks you saw run the red light so you can.
I mean, something's gotta be done with the traffic going through town too. Because in the morning, 5:36, there's trucks going through here about 40, 45, 50. They're now slowing down.
Hopefully with the select board's action tonight, it'll make it a little easier to hire beyond two police officers to make that easier for directed patrols.
Okay. Now Seth, a while ago, you said the police are the only ones that can turn the lights to caution and the lights to red, right? Who's been doing it at night and who's been doing it in the morning at 6 o'clock?
They're on timer.
They're on timers now?
Well, they've always been on a timer.
Okay.
Yep. I think the timer was set 10 to 6 and I know that the library one changes correctly at daylight savings time. And I know the one at Walgreens takes a while and it goes to daylight savings time on the old daylight savings time date. So right now, this morning I came in and the, when, when I come in, the library one is working and the other one is still waiting to catch up.
Really?
And I just wanted to give, again, I'm texting right now. I want your telephone number. Yeah. Let me give you mine now.
Again, like I, like, when it comes to matters of
scene, that sort of thing, like, reaching out to the chief first, it. Have, like, I can't provide, I'm just a middleman at that point. If he's reach out to the select board to say, "Do call any issues around police because I can't provide answers. It's just a game of telephone at that point."
We need to get the chief out from behind the desk, not doing patrols.
Yeah, and he's definitely out doing, I mean, I've seen him out doing patrols. You're responding to calls all, all the time, like, he's not just.
And, you know, on the weekends, it's been advertised, there's no police coverage on the weekends. Why not have him come in, like, on a Saturday or Sunday for four or five hours? Make it known that they're around. And just split the duties up between him and the, the one officer.
So I've discussed this and the state police advice to the town was to maximize their coverage at certain hours that corresponded to the highest activity. The weekend daytime hours in Brandon have been low enough activity that even when we had six officers, we had shifts on the weekend daytimes when we did not have two officers on the shift. It was considered the lowest activity. So their advice, the state troopers' advice, as the Brandon police was becoming smaller, was they said, "Do this Monday to Friday when you have the call volume." Because a lot of their calls are not responding to criminal complaints. A lot of their calls are just responding to people in need that, that have requirement for some assistance. And those happened during the daytime hours. So Monday morning, I, I thought the same thing. And Monday morning, there's two officers on. And what they tell me is the calls that have stacked up, that were not urgent enough to have the state police called into Brandon over the weekend, that's when they get addressed.
Right.
We do have a raised hand on Zoom, by the way.
Yeah, what?
A raised hand on Zoom.
Okay, let's go for that.
Who is it?
Neil, go ahead.
Neil.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go back, if it's okay, to the trustees of public funds. During the discussion of the Valley Community Center, it came up that, I don't know what you call it, the public funds that they trustee had paid, I believe, $20,000 for a feasibility study, which seems to me outside of the scope that was just related to us. Is there, do they have any legal responsibility to any entities other than the select board?
Voters.
Their primary responsibility to the trustees is to the voters.
And I, I guess I would note that the text of that one provision has a rather vague catch-all phrase at the end. And so I think that, again, subject to the voters, the public trustees may be interpreting it in a way that others might not be. But, you know, we are not them and we're not interpreting it. So I don't think we can really say one way or the other.
Vicki, one last time.
I want to respond to Neil. At the VCC meeting, Tanner Romano got up and said the next step is a feasibility study. So the $20,000 was for a feasibility study. If they haven't done it, they need to return the money.
I would also like to point out that that rather vague statement at the end is specific to the village. Now to change subjects. I'm wondering, because I just love the former police officers in Brandon with this new rate, if we are going to reach out and offer those officers their jobs back with this new rate.
Our chief has been in conversation with all of the officers who are now working at other departments. And he's made it plain to them that the town would be happy to have them back if they find that their new situation is not what they maybe thought it might be. And I expect that when, so he's aware that there was a ratification vote scheduled tonight, the chief is aware. And that tomorrow, the expectation is that he will update all of the advertising that the town has out for the positions. And I fully expect that he will have that conversation with the other officers.
And I can say that I reached out to one officer myself and got no response. You know, I, I did let him know that we were working on things, but no response. Okay.
Another raised hand from Neil.
Another waved hand?
Neil.
From Neil?
Yep.
From Neil?
From Neil. Go for it, Neil.
I would like to suggest that when police officers have been hired, however long that takes, that they may be integrated into the community by means of meet and greets and coffee hours and whatever. And I know it's time that we pay for, but I think that the benefits will far outweigh the money that we spend by having people feel comfortable around the police.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there is no more, we are going to recess before going into executive session. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all.
Coming out of executive session at 9:21.
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Cecil and Jeff as a working group.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion for Cecil and Jeff to be a working group to, to investigate the code of ethics complaint. All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Both? No one?
No, we have another executive session.
I move to enter executive session for 1 VSA, Section 313, Sub A, Sub 3, regarding the employment or evaluation of an employee to include the town management team.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Who is no one? Have to do it again?
I guess so.
Still there, Keith?
9:50 coming out of executive session, no action taken.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.